Okay. We're going to call the work session for February 26th to order. We're going to start out with, we have something new here, and so if the audience will be patient with the board, we have to learn how to use our microphones. So, Stefan, where are you?
I got a tutorial.
I'll cover it for you. I think we touched on it pretty well already, but...
Oh, you did?
The new mics, yeah, when we were running the intro. You just hit the button, it's a press to talk, so hit the button. Lean in a little bit and speak into it. When you're done talking, hit the button again and the green light goes off. So, green means you are live. So, these are new mics, we think they will work a little better. We've added a few speakers in the room that we hope will also help folks hear you and help us hear each other a little better. So, that really covers it.
Okay, we're going to have a test right now. Everybody's going to test their microphone simultaneously and say hello to the audience. So, ready, one, two, three.
Hello. Welcome, everybody.
How do we know which ones worked and didn't?
I need to, I'm going to ask Eric to make an announcement here about some road closures, and while he's getting ready to do that, we plan on moving item 16 up between number one and number two tonight, since we have a number of people wanting to talk about the Franklin Special School District funding. So, given that, I'll give it to Eric to make his announcement, and then we'll start out with citizen comments after that, that are not on the agenda. And I would ask, if you have asked to speak on items that are not on the agenda, it looks like all those have to do with a retirement plan, I would ask, after Eric finishes, that you line up over behind the podium.
Thank you. Good evening. I do want to share with you something we just received notice of this afternoon, that CSX has some work they're going to do that will necessitate some road closure. And there'll be pretty significant road closure on February 28th and March 1st, so Thursday and Friday, they are anticipating closing Liberty Pike at the railroad crossing there near the factory. So, this is all somewhat weather-dependent, but that is their plan right now to do that. And then, the following week, at the beginning of the week, March 4th and March 5th, a similar closure at Southeast Parkway, at the railroad crossing there on the tracks. So, again, we are just learning that. Our traffic engineering folks are working to adjust some signal timing to hopefully help a little bit with that impact, but we know that will be a bit of an inconvenience for everybody. Unfortunately, we don't have much control over that. When CSX wants to do that work, they're going to do it, but we are working to notify schools, first responders, others in the public about it, and as we learn more, we'll get more out. But, wanted to let you know that that is coming and the impacts that we expect.
Okay, we're ready for citizen comments for items that are not on the agenda. We'll line up next to the podium there, starting with Larry Barnes, followed by Tim Taylor, followed by Harry Reed, followed by Richard Verbosky, Tony Clifford, and finally, Kevin Teague. And I'll give people one more minute to bring me cards if you plan on speaking, just in case. One minute.
If you don't mind, Larry and I swap the places for just a second, because I got the short straw on this one.
Did you turn your mic on, Alderman?
I don't know if I'm on...
Well, that was the first test.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Alderman. Pleasure here to see you. My name's Tim Taylor. I'm a retired police lieutenant, Franklin Police Department, had 29 years here. I'm here on behalf of about 220 retirees who may feel that some of the decisions recently made by the Board may be a little bit egregious to some of our best interests. Couple of weeks ago, we met with the mayor and the city administrator. We were looking for answers to this new pension plan. It's caused a lot of hardships for us, going two periods of six weeks apiece, and only receiving two checks, and in 12-week period, we normally receive three. The explanations that we got were not very well-received. Most of all these retirees live on fixed incomes, and created quite a hardship by most of them. This came at Christmas time, and it caused a lot of us to withdraw savings, cash out CDs, IRAs, and even borrow money and use credit cards at a high interest rate, just to get through the month. We were advised by the administrator that the Pension Committee has saved a lot of money, $425,000, by switching to this new process. We, as retirees, don't feel like this was saving anybody any money, but it was just withheld from the people that used to be employed here. Like I said, a lot of us are elderly, myself included now. We're on fixed incomes, and we have to have the same bills paid each month, just like everybody else. When we received a January check, they called the January check, it was just basically a February check a day early. And, in our opinions, we just didn't get one for January. The money personally that I took out of savings, I've not been able to replace, because it went towards February bills. So, we're back to square one. We just hope that maybe the Board will reconsider your decisions, and think about your employees, past and present, who are watching this, and hope that y'all could come up to some resolve.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Board, my name's Larry Barnes. I'm retired from the Franklin Police Department with 30 years' service. I want to say thank you to all of you for what you folks do. I know it's a tough job, and sometimes it's hard to figure out what's right, what's wrong, and you make enemies no matter what you do. I have some questions I want to ask, and I don't know who I direct these questions to, they're just general questions. But, does the money in this retirement account belong to the employee, or does it belong to the city?
Our usual procedure is to, we'll accept the questions, but we'll refer those to staff, so it is our usual routine.
So, is anybody going to refer it, or are they going to answer it?
Staff is listening, taking notes about your questions, and Kevin can come up with those answers and share those at another time with you.
Yes.
If you'll just voice your questions and...
My next question was, why were the employees not asked for input in this changeover? Same answer. Who set the pay date at the end of the month? Was this at the request of the city, or was this something that the State of Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System set? Again, same answer. My question, I won't be redundant, but how do you account for the lack of pay in those days, that there's a void there somewhere, lost in space is what I call it? How much money did the city save by this changeover? I think Tim answered that for me, so you don't need to answer that one. I just want to say, I hope you'll consider the employees, folks that have been here a long time, that put in their dues. I was paid, and I appreciate every paycheck I got, and I enjoyed my job thoroughly. I just feel like there's some money missing here somewhere, and I would hope that it can be found, and this can be corrected. Thank you very much.
I basically just got a statement to make. I didn't really come prepared with a paper to speak on, but back in, it was November or the first part of December, I spoke with the mayor about this situation. They changed our paycheck to the 14th of December, which messed up a lot of way people pay their bills, where they had them due to come out the first. And the only reason was that was because we weren't going to get a check for 60 days, and so they changed it where it would be 45. Then, January rolls around, and we don't get a check. And, I mean, it put a lot of people in a mess paying the bills. I think most of us managed to get by, but we missed a check that we'll never get. And, they say that by putting it on January the 31st, you still got a check. Yes, you did, to pay your February bills. And it keeps going each month that way. And, because we're getting a check the end of December, it's going to go on 2020 bill, not 19, because it's the last day, so we'll never catch up that check that we lost. And, that was my statement wanted made, and I don't have a, like I say, I spoke to the mayor, and he told me that they tried everything, and this is what the Board approved. And so, I just wanted to speak of what I'd already been told. I do feel that we were shorted a check, and some way or another, it ought to be made up, because we're going to keep running a month behind. A lot of people had to borrow money to pay their bills. Some of them, I've heard, took out the money out of their 401K and different things, and had to pay a pretty good sum of money on that. And it's just, I don't know how much consideration was given, but it's put a lot of hardship on the retirees, so that was my comment.
Hi, I'm Lieutenant Verbosky, retired from Franklin PD with 30 years, or a little over. As I was walking down the hallway, I saw banners coming down this way to the meeting room, and one in particular struck me, and I would like you to take this into consideration. And it reads, "Integrity. Our actions and words are in harmony. If you make a mistake, own it. Take action to correct it, to correct the situation, and move on." Today, I'm asking you to look at that banner when you leave here, and look in your hearts and say, "Did we do the right thing?" For 30-plus years, I based everything I did on integrity, and I would hope this Board would do the same. Thank you.
Mr. Clifford? Mr. Teague?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll be brief. I don't want to sound redundant, because I know a lot of the other retirees has pretty much expressed our concerns. I did have a couple of questions. I know this went to the Board a couple of times and had several meetings. Basically, my major question, or my primary question, was there were other viable options that were not considered. I brought up something last week, or a couple of weeks ago, we had a meeting, a brief meeting, and I appreciate Mr. Stuckey sitting in on it and arranging that. Common sense would tell you, if you're going to have 45 days without a paycheck, pay that person 45 days' worth of pension wages, you know, rather than back it up one day and try to say you got paid for that month. That just, I still can't wrap my head around that, while that option wasn't even considered. Very easy option, I mean, if I was sitting on a Board, I'd have probably thought of that just like that. Also, another option would be pay them an extra, you know, check for the 30 days that were actually lost, 15 on the front end, 15 on the back end. That was another option. I understand that money was going to be coming out of the pension fund, but like Lieutenant Verbosky said, you know, you do the right thing, and, you know, just pay these people basically for a good day's work, so to speak. There's a couple of things I like to bring to attention, and you probably already know, there was no input from any retirees whatsoever, none, zero. It was just pretty much none, and that was it. Apparently, the Pension Committee voted on it, and it was passed. I was really surprised, there was no input for any retirees. I'm still, I'm surprised. Also, I found out recently, there's no retirees on our Pension Committee. I really can't understand that one, while there's no input from any retirees who retire from the City of Franklin. Some of these people worked, you know, I worked 27 and a half years, some worked 30, 40 years, or whatever, and gave their life, you know, to this place, which I thoroughly enjoyed in my career here. And I usually pick my battles very carefully, but I think this is one that I'm going to pick, obviously, because it just ain't fair to the retirees who poured their heart and soul into the City of Franklin, and actually made Franklin what it is today. There was a platform, basically, that what made Franklin today. So, anyway, I don't want to be redundant, speak, you know, I want to be brief, but I did want to get that out there, and hopefully y'all will consider doing the right thing, and, you know, talk it over, you know, amongst yourself. But, I can assure you this, if any one of y'all were in the same situation we're in, y'all'd be upset too. I can promise you that. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I could comment just real quick?
This is, well, that's not the first one I failed. Yeah, I'd like for Mr. Stuckey to make some comments, and as you make those comments, how can we answer those questions and make sure we get those back to those questions from our retirees?
I think we can pretty much answer them here, but we can fill in any blanks from there. But, let me just, and for folks in the audience who may be watching, just to summarize, what has occurred is, we moved our pension program two years ago from a city-funded pension, directly city-run pension program, to a pension program that is now operated by the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System, or TCRS. And so, we have what's called a Closed Employee Pension Program, which was the old city pension program, and now, folks that were hired from January 1 of '17 on are in the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. And what TCRS is doing for us is both managing the bulk of our investments in that closed plan, and as of January 1 of this year, took over the administration of the plan. Unfortunately, there is a difference in payment schedules between what we did before and what TCRS does. They only provide payments at the end of each month, and we provided our payments at the first of each month. And so, you know, retirees receive 12 payments in 2018, and they'll receive 12 payments in 2019. It's just unfortunate that this timing shift has occurred. There was no option with TCRS to make special payments or bridge payments. They really only make those payments to all of their retirees on that end-of-the-month date, last business day of the month. What we were able to do, and we had been hopeful that we might be able, with our custodial bank, arrange for multiple months of transition, so that it would not be a 45-day gap between checks, the last check of '18 and the first check of '19. But unfortunately, we're only able to get one special date, check-run date, through our bank. And so, we had to do that. The decision was made, August, September timeframe, we communicated out through a letter in September. We sent refrigerator magnets in October to hopefully help make sure that was clear to everybody, just to make sure that it was understood that the change was occurring. And so, that is what has happened by way of background. The option for an additional or a 13th payment was brought up to both the Pension Committee and the Board, so I do want to make it clear that that option was considered. A half payment was not, as Lieutenant Teague referenced. I would also say, the other piece, that pension fund is dollars the city has contributed on behalf of employees over many years, on behalf of all of us, to help establish that pension system for everyone. We do believe that, long-term, TCRS was the right way to go, because it provides a high level of management. It's regarded as one of the best, if not the best, state-run pensions in the country. Because of operating in a larger pension system, we could save somewhere around a half million dollars per year, because of the efficiency of how they operate and the way that works. So, that may be part of what's referred to in some of the discussion, and part of what I think drove that broader decision a couple of years ago. So, we do recognize that it creates a hardship for folks in making that transition. Our attempts were to try to communicate that, once the determination was made about how to proceed, but I'm glad to answer any other questions you have, and hopefully I've addressed that. We'll be glad to provide other follow-up to folks. We were able to sit down and talk through it a couple of weeks ago, and hopefully at least explain the mechanics of it, but glad to answer any other questions folks have, or anything else you want us to do from a staff standpoint.
Excuse me, Alderman McLendon.
It's like Congress now. No, it's not. Whoa. What would one bonus, I don't want to say bonus, because it's money they earned, but what would a catch-up, what would the one-time hit be? And is it even possible if we issued that directive? And, I understand that there's a little bit of, there's a little bit of which side of this you're on, depending on how you look at it. You know, if you're in the administration and fiduciary point of view, 12 payments in 12 months is what you're due, and that's what's been done. If you're in the recipient, then getting strung out 45 or 60 days between feels very much like you did get shorted. And they're both right, both sides of that are correct. But, just for information purposes, what would attempting to put a 13th payment, if you will, in play be for the people who would be eligible for that? And is that an order that we can issue?
Yes, it is. The cost would be around $440,000, and that would be absorbed by the pension fund itself. It wouldn't be something that we would need to do out of the general fund, it would be out of the existing pension fund. We could layer it on, it wouldn't be a special check, it would just be with whatever timing we would do that.
Essentially double.
That next payment, whenever that would be, would be increased if you did. A full additional payment, a 13th check, if you will, or 13th payment, if you will.
Wouldn't be a 13th check.
Or a half. Yeah, it would just be layered in with a...
It'd be a double check.
Already, yeah, an already scheduled payment.
And, if we were to do that, $440,000, it would be absorbed by the pension fund, which periodically we make contributions to, to keep it on target. So, although it wouldn't initially be cash out of hand, it could eventually become that when our next report came around and they said, "Well, to keep it on target, you need to make a contribution of X."
Right.
And ideally, ideally, we get ourselves to the point where we don't have to make contributions, because we've closed participation and interest earned and good management practices. It's been fully funded. But, in years past, we have had to make some kind of make-whole-get-caught-up type payments as, for example, large numbers of retirees joined the, you know, became retirees, or market conditions, or whatever. Am I right about that?
Yeah, you've got, you're continuing to make ongoing contributions, because you've got some, probably 500 employees that are in that program still today, that are still working for the city.
The defined benefit.
Yeah, in the defined benefit side, plus you've got the 200 and some, 220-plus existing retirees. And so, what we do is we study that annually, we look at, the actuaries look at it, we look at performance and the investments, et cetera, and we determine what we need to continue to put in it each year to meet our goals, make sure that we're there, and it's funded at, you know, give or take, depending on how the market's doing, around 90% of our target, which is very, very healthy. But, it would be an additional cost to that fund.
We'd probably get a bill.
Yes, you would, it would factor in...
It might not be 440,000, it could be 400.
Yes, yeah. You're going to have to offset it somehow through what you contribute, or, you know, if we have a good run in terms of investments, it may offset a good chunk of it.
Now, if we were to do that, how is it that the administration fiduciary side of this explains that it wasn't a windfall? What would be the, what would be the explanation for, say, taxpayers that, "Well, we, yes, we gave 13 checks in 12 months, but you see what happened once?"
Yeah. It's really a policy call of the Board, that you're determining that that is justified, given the transition and the hardship in terms of payment schedule and timing for folks. But you are ultimately responsible for the management and the decision-making in that pension fund, just like when we choose the actuary, or we choose the attorney that helps us, or this transition to TCRS. You all were the ultimate decision-makers in that, and this would be within your policy role to decide, "Hey, this is enough of a hardship that we feel is warranted to make either a full payment or a partial payment compared to a normal month."
Well, so, is it accurate that there were 12 regular checks cut for retirees in 2018?
There was, the 12th payment, instead of happening December 1st, happened December 14th.
Okay, so if I'm a recipient, that's two weeks of kind of having my money held hostage.
Yes.
And then, the next payment was the end of January.
Correct.
So, that's where the feeling emerges that, in fact, I got shorted 30 days, I got delayed two weeks, and then I got fully, I just got shorted another 30.
Depending on how you count, yeah, right, right.
Okay, so 12 payments in a calendar year is not, it's not always the same. I mean, if I have a great month, one month, that doesn't mean I don't go try to earn more the next. And if I have a really bad month, then it does put me behind. So, I'm wondering, so what happened, instead of paying on December 1st, we paid December, middle of December, and then instead of paying January 1st or 15th, at that point, we were in the program, and the only thing we could do was let them do what they do.
That is when they pay, yes.
All right, so what was not discretionary was the first payment out of the TCRS was the end of January. That's something we couldn't...
That's when we had crossed over to their administration, and that is when they pay retirees, across the state.
Okay, so we changed, so either then or now, the only thing we could have done was basically double up one check.
Right, you could have either written one last check through our old bank at the end of '18, or made an additional payment, or a larger payment on the December 14th check, or you could, yeah, or the only option at this point would be to have TCRS make a larger-than-normal payment in an upcoming month.
Okay. And, if we do that, there's no telling how, I mean, if you're in the defined benefit plan, then you just get paid until you are no longer with us, right?
Right.
That's a non-expiring obligation.
Yes, exactly.
So, okay, so it's not like, it's not like you're going to have 48 more payments, and we'll go ahead and make one now, and then you get 47. It could be years and years and years. That 45, that, those hiccups, you know, I served when Mr. Barnes, Mr. Verbosky, and Mr. Teague were here, and I know them to be men of high quality and high integrity, not to say that everyone else isn't, but I dealt directly with them a lot, partly because of my day job. And so, I'm, I would be willing to entertain making that double up one time, to make this, you know, in spite of the efforts we made to tell people. Telling people that it's happening doesn't change that, for some, for many, it may be the only source of income, and it's a fixed income, and even knowing doesn't allow them to make any difference, or make any different choices. The mortgage is still due, the bills, the medical bills are still due, all that is still due, so...
I'm going to interrupt you there, and I think you made your point, Alderman McLendon. You know, I'm going to suggest, after I asked the Pension Chairman to make a comment, he wanted to make a comment, Vice Mayor Barnhill, is that we probably should provide the Board with some additional documentation, because some of those things are fuzzy in your mind, as far as whenever we had this at the Board meetings. Vice Mayor Barnhill is familiar with it, because he chairs the Pension Committee. Vice Mayor Barnhill is familiar with it because he chairs the pension committee. You know, there may be some additional information we need to share with you as far as the process, and part of the process, if I understand it from our pension attorney, is that there would have to be a plan amendment, which is, which is called a window retirement amendment that has been done in certain places, but typically it's done whenever they're trying to entice people to retire early. And then it's going to cause some additional actuarial calculations, and those actuarial calculations tell us how much money we have to put in to keep up with the pension. And so, there's a lot to consider, and so I think that we need to gather some more information and documentation for the board to make sure that the board's fully informed. So, Vice Mayor?
Well, I think the mayor has covered that as far as the plan amendment. If we go back in and do any adjustments on the payments, we've got to go back in and adjust, make a plan amendment. That's according to our, actually, our Pension Trust Committee attorney, which is telling us that. So, there's a lot more to it than just adding another paycheck. And what I guess, that my question to Alderman McLendon is, we spent several months on this, discussing this, and I believe, I cannot honestly not believe that the alternative, an extra check and all the stuff that we were going through was not discussed. So, I disagree. I want to make sure that some of the guys, that I understand that disagree, so that the public understands, no retiree, no retiree will not get 12 checks in 2019, and no retiree did not get 12 checks in 2018. They all got everything they were supposed to get. In order for us to go on to the TCRS system, we had to adjust the pace dates on that in order to match up with the times that they did that. Wasn't something that we took lightly when we made those decisions, but those decisions were discussed. And I will say one other thing, too. The Pension and Trust Committee is not a closed committee. You can sit here anytime you want to sit here. It's on the calendar. It's advertised. It's in the newspaper. We don't hide anything. It's a matter of you being here, if you want to be here, and listen to what we discuss. But there's a whole heck of a lot going into something other when you're asking the city and us to sit up here and manage $105 million, when we have an opportunity to go to the state, and the state manages billions? Let me give you the example, one example. I think the state of Kentucky has about, their pension is about 30% funded. That's how poorly they manage theirs. The state of Tennessee is, what, 96 or 70% funded? That's how well the state of Tennessee manages theirs. That's the reason we went where we went and why we went in that direction. We were sitting out trying to manage it, but we were not, we did not have the vision that the state has in far as where we put the money. So, you know, there's a whole lot more, too, than just adding an extra paycheck, or one 12th on to each of the paychecks, or whatever you're looking at doing. And I would suggest that before we get too deep into this, if that's where the board wants to go, that we go back and revisit where we were, how we got to the point where we got. And I respect all the comments that were made, and certainly, we, we, it was a tugging in the mayor and the rest of us sitting on the committee and where we were to get to the point that we got. But nothing was taken lightly. I want to make sure that everyone understands, when you're listening, no city employee got less than 12 checks last year. No city retiree will get less than 12 checks this year. So, nobody will be shorted. It's a timing issue, I agree, which won't be less, won't be having any less money simply because we've changed to the system that we've gone to.
I really would like to move on because I don't think the board has all the information that they need, and I want to make sure when you make your comments that you have all the information that's necessary to make your comments, that you have something to back them up, so there's no missing. So, with your permission, I'd like to move on, and we'll bring this back to another work session, and we'll have all the information you may need and give you adequate time. But we have a long agenda tonight, and...
Mr. Mayor, may I have a question that I want answered whenever we are looking at the information? And that is, and I don't know what this is, if, you know, if we're saving half a million dollars a year, where does that come in? Where does that come about? Does that just mean that we're not having to pay in an extra half a million? In other words, that is something that I want to know about because...
Administrator fees involved, yeah. I'm sorry. Administrator fees involved.
But I just want to know, what happens, how does that affect the amount of money that we have to pay all the time?
We're just avoiding costs we are incurring in the old system.
So, again, those questions, and we'll try to have all those questions and answers in a memo so that you can make your decisions and comments with a full background information refreshment. So, the next...
One final comment. When is our next meeting? Is it March? When's our...
It's March 4th at 1:00.
1:00.
Right in here.
Right in here.
So, the next item is item number one, which is a possible incentive program of development. New affordable workforce housing is recommended by the Housing Commission. The presenters ask that I let the people that wanted to speak publicly about this speak first. Is that still the preference? So, Scott Black, Kevin Mills, and Matt Largin, you each have one minute to speak.
Okay. Do you want to go, or you need to?
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll start. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Board of Aldermen. Appreciate it. Matt Largin, President Williamson, Inc., and a neighbor of Alderman Burgers and McKay's Mill. What I'm talking about tonight is the importance of affordable or workforce, or we're calling attainable housing. Attainable housing is just housing people can attain at different parts of their career. This has become a bigger issue for the business community in Williamson County. In fact, over the past two years, we've added this to the survey questions in our Outlook Williamson Event, our economic summit. In 2017, we asked the question, "Would you like to see more affordable housing options in Williamson County for your employees?" 58% said yes, 10% said no, 31% were neutral. We asked the same question last year in 2018. 63% said yes, 12% said no, and 24% were neutral. We're definitely seeing this becoming a bigger issue in our community. One, because housing close to where you work decreases traffic, something we're all concerned about in this community. And secondly, increasing traffic or people moving further out from our community decreases the potential labor pool for our existing companies like Mars Pet Care. Makes it harder for them to find employees. So, I encourage you all to look seriously at this proposal and support this proposal coming up about adding some incentives and taking that first step to addressing affordable housing in Franklin. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Scott Black. I live in 117 Bromley, and that's what we're supposed to do with these. And I currently serve as the chairman of the Franklin Housing Authority. I come to you tonight excited about affordable housing in our community. I agree with everything that Matt said, that we really need it. But I'm coming to you tonight, ahead of this proposal, to remind you guys where this started. This all started when the Franklin Housing Authority requested funds on our impact fees. And that presentation that night, I'll be honest with you, got a little confusing, and I was, I left that meeting a little disgruntled at the way that the meeting went. So, I've been saying for years that we're different than everybody else. I finally did my homework, actually Susan did my homework, to go back and find out why we're different. So, I've brought something tonight I'm going to pass out to you guys maybe after the meeting that is a state statute, and it is a Tennessee Code Annotated 1320101 that basically describes the Public Housing Authority as a public agency. And it describes that we're completely different than everybody else, so much so that you could basically waive all of our fees, and we're your partner. It's already a state law that we're your partner, and we should be treated as your partner. I'll just point this out. Had Derwin been sick during their last meeting, we would not be eligible for the funds that are being described tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Mills. I'm a resident of the city of Franklin for the past three years. Every moment of it's been delightful. Due to my parents' jobs, we moved around a lot when I was a child, and I believe this is the best community that I've ever lived in. I'm a husband, I'm a father of three. I'm a financial-struggling, middle-class family. I don't have any complaints besides the financial means to survive in this city. The educational program is extraordinary. The extracurricular activities for my children are wonderful. I have a daughter in Franklin Elementary, a son in Freedom Intermediate, and an older daughter in Freedom Middle. And they enjoy every minute of it. It makes them, they're excited to go to school every day. You know, I wish I could make them do their chores like that. But, you know, it's tough. You can ask any middle-class family, and they'll tell you that we love Franklin, everything about it, but it's the most hardest financial place to live. You know, so anything that you could do to help us would be greatly appreciated because it's hard to work in Franklin and not be able to shop in Franklin. You know, that's tough. And, you know, we get by, but, you know, the people that make the decisions on this should also, you know, it's got to be gut-clinching to think that, you know, the people that are building this community and the people that are maintaining the community can barely afford to live in it or not live in it at all. You know, it's tough, that's a tough thing to deal with, but I appreciate your time. I just wanted to put in my two cents. Y'all have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Appreciate that, Mr. Mills. We'll move on now to the presentation unless, Tom, do you want to introduce the item?
Good evening. I'm Tom Marsh. I'm the interim director...
Did you push your green button? Yes.
Of Building Neighbor Service Department. And I would just like to introduce Elizabeth Wanzak, who is our current chairman of the Housing Commission, and hopefully many of your members, Mr. John Besser, who's their immediate past chairman of the Housing Commission. And they are going to discuss with you, several months ago, the board asked the Housing Commission to study a possible incentive program. They've talked about it for a few meetings over a few months and are prepared to bring back some ideas to you now.
Good evening, Board of Mayor and Aldermen. Thank you so much for having us this evening. We are very excited to put a proposal that the Housing Commission has worked incredibly hard on. This is a proposed incentive program. In July of 2018, the board requested the Housing Commission look into the possibility of an incentive program to encourage the construction of affordable and workforce housing that qualifies under the MSA table. And the slide talks about, "The Housing Commission recommends that the municipal code Title 21 be amended to include an additional incentive program applicable to the development of new affordable housing." Why? The task assigned to the Housing Commission, was assigned to the Housing Commission by BOMA, one of the major reasons is to reduce traffic, make it possible for employees to live closer to work, reduce vehicle miles traveled. We have talked to lots of different companies and got several statistics on how many of their employees actually work in the city or in the county, or how many commute in. One of the big ones was A-Marshall Foods. 20% of their employees actually live in the city of Franklin. 34% live in the county, but that leaves 47% are outside of Williamson County. We also spoke to Christiane Pezavanto. She's the manager of the new ale house that took over the Logans there in Cool Springs. They have 60% of their employees that are commuting from other counties. We've heard this time and time again, that a vast majority of people that are working in this county are not living in this county, particularly for our service industry. And we want to reduce vehicle miles traveled. That impacts all of us. Support and encourage business development. We've, they've also expressed to us that they have a lot of vacant positions because they can't find anyone to work. Envision Franklin encourages a range of housing options and price points to support both employees and the local economy. Barriers to affordable housing. As you know, the city of Franklin has significant development impact fees. These fees, particularly the road and parkland impact fees, have been identified as barriers to the construction of homes at lower price points. These fees for one single-family home are approximately $13,000. So, on this chart, we're defining affordable housing, and this is for the median income for a household of four. And as you can see, for 2018, so that's the line in blue, the median income was $74,900. The income limit, which is considered 80% of median income, was $59,900. And the price of the home that they consider to be affordable is $248,545. And to put that into some perspective, at the end of December 2018, the median closing price for homes in Williamson County was $484,013. So, the proposed incentive program. The proposed incentive program attempts to address the barrier of high-impact fees. The homes would be owner-occupied and deed-restricted for a number of years that BOMA determines. In addition to the traditional standard bank loan, there are a variety of financing options available. These may include the housing fund, THDA, and CHP, and a person would have to make $62,000 to qualify for a $248,000 home. So, the Housing Commission discussed this initiative through several meetings and recommends the following incentive. Appropriate resources from the general fund to offset road and parkland impact fees that would be applicable to construction of new housing units to support a diverse employment base. Specifically, the incentive would be available to nonprofit or for-profit developers who construct new homes priced up to $248,000. And our suggested minimum criteria is that any project presented for consideration must have a completion timeline attached to it, and every home will be deed-restricted for a period to be determined. The financial impact. The Housing Commission recommends the board appropriate an initial $1 million from the general fund for the proposed program. This amount would pay for the road and parkland impact fees for up to 78 single-family homes, and the appropriation would be determined through the budget process each year. And thank you for your consideration.
Okay. I'm going to give us about 10 minutes to talk about this, so, and if we need to bring it back for additional comments, we will do that, an additional clarification. So, Vice Mayor?
I'm curious as to one of the comments that Scott Black made, when he said if Derwin hadn't have been there two weeks ago, the Franklin Housing Authority would not be eligible for any of these funds. Why is that?
The concern had been for rentals, and the commission talked extensively about to make this for single-family homeownership or to make it open for rentals. And the final vote from the commission was to allow the board to decide if they want to open it up for rental opportunities or not.
If I may, Mayor.
Alderman McLendon, you're recognized.
Well, I'm, as many of you may know, I'm on this commission.
On the commission?
Yes. I'm the liaison from the board to the Housing Commission. So, no, no. Derwin was, pointed out that the language that had been brought forward in the presentation and in the program was limited to homes that would be for sale. And he made the point correctly and fairly that that would eliminate the rental opportunities, and for many people, the rental opportunities are more accessible than the purchase, you know, for no other reason than down payments, what have you. Upon his advocacy for that, a motion was made, a vote was taken, and the presentation and the proposal that comes before you tonight leaves it up to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen to determine whether rentals, or homeownership, or both would be eligible participants for this program. But it's true that had he not been there, it might not have been, it might not, there might not have been an advocate for the rental element. That's true, but it's not, there's nothing, it's not insidious.
That's not a part of this proposal. It wasn't an option.
The proposal is, allows the board to make, to make really two big, well, three big choices. One, are you interested, and if so, to what extent financially? And if you are, then do you want to make a program for which participants can be offering rental units, or homes for sale, or both? And if you are, then are you interested in a program that permits applicants to be private-for-profit, or not-for-profit, or both? So, the concept is the board essentially rebating by way of a contribution the development fees that are so expensive for these programs, for these homes. A commitment... A, a commitment of $1 million would probably generate on the order of 80 or more units of affordable workforce, whatever term you want to use. So we're talking about making a, which would be a significantly larger number than is currently getting on the market in any given year, by a lot. So, the presentation was deliberately made to create discussion points for the board to make policy decisions as opposed to come forward and, and have a, you know, some preconceived idea of, of, of what the program ought to be.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor, were you through with your comments and the question that you asked Alderman McLendon?
Well, no, not exactly. When we, when we looked at this and the, and the, what brought this forward was when the Franklin Housing Authority asked for the $540,000 to offset the fees that they were being charged to build 42 units. And I said, I mean, that's fine, I mean, I can see that. I see, I can see 42 units. I can see 42 times 13,000 or whatever that calculates out to be hybrid calculated out, and, and come up with the 540,000. But we, as Scott said, bless his heart, we clouded, we clouded that night with a need, and now we've got this in front of us asking for a million dollars from the, a million dollars from the General Fund. You know, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, and I don't want to be, I don't want to be the one person the perception is, but if we had many nights like this, we've got, I think it's 900,000 coming up with the Franklin Special School District, there's a possibility of 400,000 to go for an extra check, a million here, end of the year, we're broke. That's, that's $50 million we're looking at. If you multiply them to 24. And, and I'm, you know, I don't know what we get out of this, I'm not sure what we get out. I know what I get out when I see 42 units on the drawing board with an opportunity for those. And I'm still a little confused on whether or not Derwin was renting those or selling those. I'm assuming he was selling those. Renting, all rental, okay, alright.
I'm sorry, Alderman Martin, I had, Alderman Branford, then I'll recognize you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's just, you know, I see goodness out of both of these organizations, and I think we are beginning to compete and pool at those limited dollars that you mentioned, Alderman Barnhill. I think that million dollars sound like something I said about four or five years ago. It was a little crazy then, but I understand that, what is needed. So I guess we need to come down to, do we want to create rentals? And I think the Housing Commission, one of their policies or guiding principles is, is no rentals, is pretty much homeownership. So we have competing, Franklin Housing Authority is, has been mostly rentals, but they are interested in getting into the homeownership business, I think. So at some point, the two entities is, is competing for those limited dollars and to do good things for our local community, for our, for our citizens here. But how do we, we as a board need to decide, do we want to create more rentals in our community through the Commission work? Do we want to add rentals, or do we want to have that as homeownership? Homeownership. Franklin Housing Authority is providing a lot of rentals. So there is a, we have to decide. And I think you all can only bring stuff to us, you cannot make a decision at all. We make the final decision, you make recommendations. I've, I've always communicated that to this board, is that you do not make a decision, you make a recommendation to us. Then we decide whether we want to create rental properties with these incentives, do we want to create homeownership with these incentives? That's where I stand.
Alderman Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remember, I think even sometime before I became an Alderman, there was discussion by the board about at that time, I think, they just required some developers to, to sell some of their units at a lower price. But I, I do remember in the study that was done after that, there was a look at some other agencies that did this in other states. And I, that last thing that was said about the, that says every home would be deed-restricted for a period to be determined, I think that part about deed restriction is, there's a lot to that. And I certainly think that needs to be discussed in mu- much more detail, or even different proposals brought in much more detail. Because that is a part that I understand has been extremely difficult in other areas.
And if I could just interject there, I think that would be the plan, if, if there's some, if it's the interest of the board to move forward, then staff would create some of what you're describing. Housing Commission has made a bold recommendation, and we can massage that recommendation, and I think Alderman McLendon did a good job of clarifying many aspects of how we have to look at that from a policy standpoint as a board. You know, this, it could be a, could be a pilot program. It could be half rental, I mean, there's just so many options, so, but these are decisions that the board has to make, so Alderman Blanton.
So my confusion was typically when we're presented a presentation, there's options. So to know, to know this was more of kind of what you guys came up with consensus, but yet you were expecting us to kind of pluck through and find the options that was rental versus purchase. Couple of things I want to say. I do appreciate what Scott's saying, is that the Franklin Housing Authority is already set up and successful, and has been in this community for, I don't, I don't know your anniversary date, but you can look at some of the existing housing around our community and see they've been here for a very long time. That's not to say that the Housing Commission doesn't also have new blood and new ideas. I think for me personally, it's striking the balance of showing support to an entity that is not only supported in a government situation larger than us, that has the opportunity to partnership and gain dollars in grant situations. To me, it's important for us to continue to partner and support the Franklin Housing Authority. But I also think that there's a demographic of people that are, I'm not even going to say above, that's the wrong word. There's another demographic of people in housing, thank you Scott, that we still have not addressed. And I think we keep beating our head against the wall, and, and the unfortunate part is, as we beat our head against the wall, prices continue to go up, it becomes less and less attainable for us to solve a problem that is almost running away from us. So, all of that to say is, I think, I appreciate the efforts, I know this isn't the first presentation in the lifetime of the Housing Commission that they've brought us an opportunity. The legislature's tied our hands, we've got to be creative. So I want to dig in deeper and figure out how we can make this happen, and start executing some real, you know, frames put together so that we're not pushing a demographic of people of our community. I've said it several times this week on different levels, but my concern is, the more and more that we churn and lose people that have grown up here, were born here, moved here, our story is being diluted. And our history, which is something that we hang our hat on quite well, will no longer be a part of who we are, so.
We've got Alderman Speedy next.
I guess I'd like to make a comment, I guess, you know, the last week we had the Planapalooza, and I, and I do think there are probably some opportunities that the board has, the planning commission has through some of the updated zoning that we're looking at, higher density in different areas. And I guess I'd like to see us maybe go down that path more than just throwing a million dollars at it. Other thing I'd like to see, I think we had some pretty good slides one time where we saw how many affordable units were delivered by each of the different places in Franklin, and, and how much tax dollars or CBDG money, or whatever money was accomplished to get that, and I'd like to revisit those numbers too, I guess.
Alderman McLendon, we need to wrap it up, and what, what my, Alderman Berger, you gonna make a comment too? I said 10 minutes, but I'll make a. So Alderman McLendon, Alderman Berger, and then Mr. Stook, you want to make a few comments? And my comments will be that we'll bring something, craft something with some of those options, and bring it back to another work session, so Alderman McLendon.
Well, if, if the, if the outcome here is that we're going to bring it back to another work session, that's progress, and I'll waive my time.
Alderman Berger.
I think this has to have a lot more study. We had talked about doing a study, or getting y'all together, all the housing groups together. And actually, what was proposed before, I, I just thought was sort of not a good idea, I didn't think it was a good use of our money at the time. But I don't think the question is here rental versus ownership, or any of this. I, I think what we need to do to tackle this issue head-on is we, we have got to do some kind of study here. We have got to get our hands around this issue. And, and we have people coming in here doing, you know, let's do this, let's do that, let's do this. We really don't know what we need to do. And whoever brings solutions, we should be across the board welcoming people to bring solutions, whether it's rent, for sale, profit, nonprofit, all, all the gamut. But Franklin Housing Authority is our authority, it is a quasi, quasi-government authority, correct? Scott? Thank you. And that is an authority we established, and so that, if nothing else, is what we should be working with. I'm not saying that we ignore you all, don't get me wrong here. Everyone should be at the table with these issues and bringing solutions. There are so many questions here. I used to do studies on affordable housing, and that was years ago. But I know there's way too many issues here to be answered tonight. And I think we need a dedicated meeting to this, but I don't think that anybody has the expertise here to bring those solutions, or the, the right questions here to even bring those here tonight. So with that said, I know everybody wants to provide solutions, we, we desire to have more affordable workforce housing. It's a given, I don't think anybody in this board disagrees with that. But I think we have to do something better, I think we have to get our arms around this with a, a much larger study and a much more concentrated, focused effort. Because I just feel like we're a bunch of balls bouncing off the wall. And then we get somebody bringing a proposal, or something here, or something there, it's like, I just want to go timeout. We, we need to get our arms around this with a better study. We really do need to put some serious money into studying this issue before we decide to waive fees, give money, whatever it is. And I think we also need to understand better, Scott Black, what the heck we're doing with Franklin Housing Authority if it's a, a government agency established and given to us by the state to do so. And honestly, I'll be the first to admit, I've ignored it, I have not understood that to, I mean, I do understand that it's a government authority that we placed, and we've put, put this together, but I will be the first to say, I've ignored it. And I, I think it's a time that we quit ignoring these things, and we have to get down to where the rubber meets the road, and it's going to require a lot more study.
Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Stook if he'll, he'll make his comments, and we'll keep moving on after that.
You kind of touched on it, but I just want to be clear on what I, I think makes sense to come back to you with, is maybe what, what the recommendation talked about is if you were in favor of this or supportive of it, that we would draft details and amend the municipal code to provide for this. I'd suggest we take sort of a middle step, which is maybe sort of outline some concepts and ideas of how this might work, how it might apply to ownership, how it might apply to rental, or really initially, the talk was around tax credit deals, which were at this point being done by the Housing Authority, but could be done by privates as well, that, that fall into that affordable range for rental housing. But let, let us do a little more work on outlining some concepts and options for you, so that you can respond to something maybe a little more specific, that's, that's based in what was presented to you tonight, and, and then get some feedback from there, that, that might help guide the discussion a little better, so, or at least further the discussion a little more, so. That's, that's what I would suggest, if you're okay with that, give us a little time to, to do more of that work with the Housing Commission and staff, to, to bring you something more of an outline to respond to.
15 seconds, Alderman Berger.
I have one question for direction. Have, has anyone, including the city, have we looked at any other best practices of growing communities similar to ours with tough, tough in the affordability range? Because they're growing progressive communities who are doing well financially. Have we looked into, at any best practices across the nation of people doing, of, of government groups, cities?
Yes.
And, and if so, can you bring some of those to us and show us these?
I'd refer you to the study we did a few years ago, BWC.
My stuff's back in the 19, late 1990s, and my stuff's all out of date, and I have not looked at that for years. But I would love to have some of that information.
We have a study we did, I'd refer you back to that. There are some limitations we have because of state law, in terms of some of the things we can do in what's called inclusionary zoning, which is forbidden in the state. But, but we have studied that, and, and, and we can come back and refresh some of those concepts.
And if there's anything smart, wise, and prudent for the city to do, that we could take to the state legislature, that would be good for Tennessee, not just Franklin, but all of Tennessee, if there's some wise proposal out there that we, we cease in another community, that we shouldn't be afraid to take to our state.
Alright, we're going to move on, 10 minutes turned into 20.
Thanks.
Thank you all for your hard work on this, and we'll be back to talk about it again. Item 16 is a discussion regarding inter-local agreement with Williamson County, the city of Franklin, the Franklin Special School District to redistribute a portion of half of the 1 half-cent percent sales and use tax increase that is not allocated for schools. If you'll give an explanation of that, and then I've got a few speaker cards here.
We're, we're visiting this topic, as you know, last year, a half-cent sales tax, additional sales tax is approved by voters across Williamson County. In conjunction with that vote, each city in Williamson County entered into agreements, inter-local agreements with Williamson County to dedicate the city portion, and half of every local sales tax generated, half goes to public schools. The other half stays with the city within which it was generated for city purposes. But for this new half-cent, for three years, each of the cities agreed to dedicate the city portion to public schools for that first three years. We had a discussion late last year about the potential of extending the timeframe that, that the city of Franklin dedicated its sales tax to public education. Board decided to not go in that direction. At the first part of this year, Alderman Martin asked that staff re-engage with some discussion with the county on maybe another approach to this issue. And so we did so, and we sat down with representatives from Franklin Special School District, with Williamson County, and sort of talked through how we might do that, and, and essentially, the, the essence of the proposal is pretty straightforward. When you do that math collectively, that average daily attendance percentage, the, the typical share that Franklin Special gets from public school, or from a sales tax for, for their portion of public school funding, is about 8%. When we apply that to the city portion, that's approximately $600,000 a year. And so over three years, that's $1.8 million. And the proposal was made that the city and county split that equally, meaning the city would put in $300,000 a year for each of the next three years, and the county would do likewise, and that would basically keep Franklin Special School District whole, that's, that's the math. Essentially, the formula would be, use whatever the average daily attendance percentage is, apply it to the city's half, and, and, and provide that to Franklin Special School District, and the city and county would split that equally. and the city and county would split that equally. When we look at specifically how the city would accomplish that, if you should direct, I would recommend that we pull that payment from what's called the County Facilities Tax Fund. These are dollars that come to the city from county-collected facilities tax that come to the city. We've used those dollars largely for infrastructure and projects related to schools, and that would seem to be a nice fit for us, that we could allocate approximately $300,000 a year. We'll have to do the math every year, but it would be two payments a year totaling approximately $300,000 a year for the next three years. So that is the proposal that's before you. The interlocal agreement would need to be approved by each of the governing bodies, Franklin Special School District, Williamson County, and the Board of Mayor and Aldermen. This has been through the committee structure, I think, at the county, and is slated for a vote on March 11th at the County Commission. So we are recommending this for your consideration tonight, and glad to answer any questions you have.
Well, before the board asks questions, I'm gonna recognize Commissioner Beathard, who is carrying this on the County Commission's side on the March 11th meeting, and he wanted to make a few comments. And so I'm gonna have to instruct you on how to use the microphone. You push the button.
I think I was here. I followed the instructions earlier. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Alderman, for giving me this opportunity. I think Eric Stuckey laid it out fairly well. Yeah. On the County Commission's side, it has not gone through all the committees yet. Out of three, it has gone through two of them. There still has the Budget Committee to go through, and then the final vote will be one night before you guys meet to decide on this, will be the night that the Commission votes on this. The two committees that have seen it have voted unanimously in support of it. I guess what I would like to do, and maybe this is not just for you guys, but those sitting behind me, is to try to explain a little bit about how we got here. This is mainly an anomaly. There are no bad guys. I think what created this anomaly isn't just that we have two school districts, but that one of them happens to be a special school district, one of only 14 remaining in the state of Tennessee. That allows that school district to be its own taxing authority. And that created a little bit of a legal quandary, a loophole, a hiccup, if you will, that caused the gifted portion, not the state-mandated portion, but the gifted portion, to be left out when being distributed to our schools. So, to be clear, this resolution only speaks to the gifted portion. FSSD, everyone agrees, is getting an increase in revenue from the state-required portion, that half of the increase of the sales taxes. What I think each of us has to consider here, in realizing that we don't have purview over FSSD, that's the main thing about the special school district, the county has no purview over them, and this body has no purview over them. However, six county commissioners have districts that overlap FSSD. The other county commissioners, I'm gonna have to persuade that this is a worthwhile venture, not just for the kids and the future, but for our housing values, which I know and recognize brings up the problem for the first item on your agenda, and our ability to attract business. So I'll ask you to think, what is the likelihood that the average voter in Franklin, who voted to raise their own taxes? And we all know tax is a four-letter word in Williamson County. But they did that, I think, mainly because of that caveat, that gifted portion, that made this an interesting endeavor, a unique endeavor. It was thinking outside of the box by Mayor Rogers Anderson. And I think it's what brought people to the polls and caused them to vote in favor of raising their own taxes. Excuse me, only to learn that FSSD would be left out of the gifted portion. It's a hiccup, it's not a disaster, but this resolution, if accepted, will cure that hiccup.
Alderman Branstruth. And I'm gonna allocate about five minutes for discussion on this, if that's okay. I hope it turns into 20.
Well, for me, it's done a lot of discussion, because I'm glad that we are able to identify the hiccup, and move forward, and clearing it up. So I'm in support of moving forward with everything going to the Pacific Committees and getting approved. So I will be supported from this end.
Alderman Martin.
I just want to say one thing. Thank you for doing this, Brian, on the part of the county. These are all our children. It doesn't make any difference if they go to the county schools or the city schools. They are our children. And our children go to the county schools after they get out of the junior high. So, you know, we're just talking about the children, and that's what our future is all about. So I appreciate you and the others who have cared enough to proceed with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Martin? I'm sorry, Alderman Branstruth. Alderman Br... Well, I'm trying to remember whether to push the button or not. So Alderman Blanton, and then that I'll follow by Alderman Barnhill.
Okay, I'm scared of this thing now. I just want to say that I supported this at the first iteration. I'm glad that we have a second approach, and I still support it.
Recognize, Vice Mayor.
Well, I have a couple of questions. Well, I have one comment. You got a real tough sell to sell, that commissioner that's representing Knoxville. Bethesda, College Grove, Burrwood, Fairview, all of those county commissioners, there's gotta be, you said six that touch this. So there's 18 that doesn't, that do not touch it. They just don't necessarily have a... I don't want to say a dog in the hunt, but they don't. Now, my question, my question, my comment is this. When we first looked at this, when you made that proposal to us, it was like $3.7 million. But now it's down to 1.8. I mean, where did the other 1.8 go? I mean, is there... Can I ask you that question?
Sure. Well, it's the difference between extending the sales tax and everything that's collected over a period of time, as opposed to just doing the math in the three-year window. So it's a more precise measure of what is, would be due, what's expected to be due over the three-year period within the three-year window. So we really made the whole pie... With the previous proposal, it made the whole pie larger. And this really just says, what's the amount that you'd expect to owe Franklin Special, and split it equally between city and county, and don't mess with changing the timeframe. It was an attempt to try to approximate it, but it made the whole pie bigger, so kind of both school districts benefited a little bit. It was a different approach.
Sure, it was. It was a good thing. Or whatever, that we probably revisited, not on the first time. Because the first time was exclusively a City of Franklin, $3.7 million expenditure. And that's turned into a City of Franklin, $900,000 expenditure, and the county $900,000. I would point out my take on this. And I will support this. But that doesn't matter exactly until you find out whether or not, over that first Monday, or second Monday, whether it passes the County Commission. So anyway, we're saying, you know, we can all sit up and say, I support it, I support it, I support it. But until you get 13 commissioners, you ain't got it. So, you know, we can reserve whatever we want to reserve and make on this. But, you know, it'll be an interesting trip. That $300,000 a year, coming from where, again?
The county facilities tax.
County facility. Let me ask. Did... It's not as if the city does not participate with Franklin Special School District. Make sure that we understand something. How many of us sitting up here that say we're supporting this, how many of us included the $7 million in capital expenditures over the next 10 years to go facilities improvements for the Franklin Special School District? Did everyone put $7 million in? Did they? We're gonna find out. We'll find out with CIC. So don't misunderstand, whether we did it or didn't do it, we are supporting Franklin Special School District. There is, out of the 100 and, out of the 644 million, 7 million of them was for facilities improvements going to the Franklin Special School District. Football fields, soccer fields, playground equipment, all of that. Now, we came out, and we would be able to share and participate in that. But it's, so it's not a, it's not as if we're sitting up here, the bad guy, the good guy, whatever. We work with the county school system, we work with the county. We are fortunate enough, it would appear to me, to be working with Franklin Special School District also.
I've got Alderman Speedy, followed by Alderman McLendon, and I have two speakers. So my five minutes is, again, turned into 20. But that's okay.
Well, I'm also gonna support it, but I'll probably be a little bit redundant with Alderman Barnhill. But I want to make it clear that when we voted against the six-month extension, that we, I don't think anybody up here was against FSSD. I mean, we've got former teachers, current parents, former parents, but I think we voted against it because we...
Former student.
Former student. Yeah, former student. I think we voted against it, just the intent from the normal voter was not that the City of Franklin would be on the hook for another $3.7 million. And I think, again, most people voted for this under the assumption that, and we all have seen the flyers, I think I brought up one of the last work sessions, it clearly said Williamson County and FSSD. And I think we'll also find out, as Mr. Barnhill said, in the Capital Investment Program rankings come out, I'm almost positive that the two FSSD programs are in the green section and under $150 million. So I'll support it.
Alderman McLendon.
No one is against clean air, water, mom, apple pie, or schools. And so my comments shouldn't be interpreted, or labeled, or construed as I'm not for education. But I do have some questions, and I'm glad that you guys get to vote first, because it may make it moot. Because I'm certainly not gonna do anything by ourselves. But my questions are, how is this any different, except less money, than the thing we already turned down? I mean, we already decided not to go further or do more once. This just sounds like ongoing negotiation. If I've mistaken that, please let me know, but that's what it sounds like. And two, there is, it was clear in my mind that everything that the City of Franklin was foregoing would be collected and split. And what's basically now happening is that the county has decided to not do that. Now, I watched carefully Mayor Anderson's presentation, and he never said that. So in fairness, this was a miscommunication. In my mind, and maybe in others, I was supporting foregoing all of our revenue for a period of time in order that both systems could benefit equally of all the money that we were foregoing. Now, Mayor Anderson did not confirm that. So I was seeing the flyers and drawing assumptions. Mayor Anderson fairly clearly, in retrospect, had a different idea of what was gonna happen. And that's not to say he did anything wrong. But I remembered, to be fair, I remembered something that didn't happen. I remembered somebody saying that it would all be split, and it wasn't. It wasn't said, I watched the whole meeting again. But that doesn't resolve this problem, which is, would we have done this deal if it had been pitched this way on the front end? Which is to say, well, you're gonna forego your revenue, and you're gonna kick in a million dollars cash. I don't think we would have had the votes for that, then. And so to be, I mean, so if I wouldn't have voted for it then, other than to just tidy this thing up, and let everyone stop coming to meetings, and remove the awkwardness that must exist between a lot of good-hearted public servants, as they squabble over this million or two, I mean, other than that, why would, why would I say yes to this now if I don't think I would have said yes to it if you'd have pitched it to me this way on the front end? Now, all of that is to say, let me add this quickly. The FSSD projects that are in our capital improvements projects, I have advocated strongly for them, and I voted with my votes in the capital improvements projects to put them at the top of the list. So no one should leave this thinking, I'm not supporting the FSSD. What I'm advocating for is, remember our fiduciary duties to our taxpayers. This is real money. And as Alderman Barnhill has already said, there's a lot of great things we can do that we could pat ourselves on the back for having done, but it's real money, and it has to come from somewhere. So if someone can tell me how this is different, if this is somehow not just a better offer, a cheaper carpet, then please do, but that's kind of what it sounds like.
Alderman Speedy, I'm gonna give you a...
Brian, I'll steal this from him, but he probably said, if we'd have gone to the polls and said, would the residents of Franklin have given this up for two years, three years, or four years? If it was four years, it probably would have passed as well. So it's an anomaly, it's a way to maybe correct it and do it somewhat equitably, so I'll support it.
Okay, I have two citizens that want to make comments, Cindy Scares and Brandy McCutcheon. And so you have one minute each, please.
She's got a... I'm Brandy McCutcheon. I have three kids in the Franklin Special School District, also serve on Parent Leadership Council, and I'm an active volunteer. My question is, he who holds the gold, holds the power. So how does the city's money end up in the county's hands, with the city having no say as to where it's going now? I'm confused. It's your money, right, that you're gifting the city? So I'm just confused as to why the city school system that is inside the city limits is not getting a part of that money that was delegated for, that was gifted to the school system? Why are we, I agree, why are we having to use additional funds, which would be like using twice the money for the same benefit, when it should be done the right way? Correct the mistake and do it the right way, and give Franklin Special School District the money that you promised taxpayers it would go to? Guess what I'm saying? So that's my confusion. This seems simple to me. It seems common sense.
I can put you with our finance director, who can explain all the portions that are divided and so on. So if you'll shoot me an email, I'll connect you with her.
My name is Cindy Scares. I live at 308 Richmond Place. I really love the sidewalk that I have, that connects me to downtown on 96. Thank you all so much for that. It's a great thing. But I'm here tonight because I'm a volunteer at Freedom Middle School right now. I've been a volunteer at every, I've been a volunteer at every single school that my children have attended for the last nine years. I think I've been a PTO chair. And as a PTO chair this year, I asked the parents, many of whom are free and reduced lunch participants, to pony up for light bulbs and for a sound system last year for our gym. You have a really nice new sound system here. And, you know, our schools are not fully funded. They're adequately funded. And Dr. Snowden does a wonderful job, and the central office staff, and all the teachers, and lots of volunteers. There is a lot of need, and the baseball fields that you're talking about, my son has played on a baseball field that doesn't drain for, this will be his third year now. And that's a proposal that the city will probably get more benefit out of than our school. We use those, we'll use those facilities for, from three to five some afternoons, and you'll use them all weekend. So we are partners here, and as Brandy said, I feel like I voted for my city to, I voted to raise my taxes, and I am willing for that money to be used. But it was clear to me, from the flyer that we've all seen, that that money was to be used for the schools in our county, which ours are part of. And our, that's not happening. And you hold the key to that. Thank you.
About on. And consideration liquor license for Cool Springs Wine and Spirits. Any question about any of those? About on, and consideration liquor license for Cool Springs Wine and Spirits, any question about any of those? Alderman McLendon.
As to Cool, as to the liquor license for Cool Springs Wine and Spirits, it will be my intent to, to abstain from voting as I have had an attorney-client relationship with the owners of Cool Springs Wine and Spirits, completely unrelated to their liquor license, but nonetheless, it's probably a good idea if I don't vote on it.
Alderman Speedy.
I would probably second that, they're your existing clients in my day job.
Okay. No comments, we'll move on then to item six, we are going to ask that to be deferred to the March the twelfth meeting. We like to defer that one on a regular basis. Then we're gonna go to items seven and eight, which are Resolution twenty nineteen dash twelve, initial resolution authorizing the city to issue general obligation bonds amount not to exceed thirty-four million five hundred thousand dollars, and consideration Resolution twenty nineteen thirteen, a resolution to issue general obligation and refunding bonds in amount not to exceed sixty-one million five hundred thousand dollars.
So we've got a bond issue that covers both new money at thirty-four and a half million and a refunding at twenty-seven million, and Christine will take you through, she did this in some detail with the Budget and Finance Committee, but we wanted to give an overview to the full board here tonight, so Christine, take it away.
Here in two thousand nineteen, we are looking at new money for new, new projects, these are all projects that have been approved previously by the board or are part of the, of the current budget, thirty-four point five million dollars. Eighty percent of this, of these proceeds are for road-related projects. Franklin Road, the, the largest of those projects, as well as part of McEwen four and five, as well as continuation of the major road resurfacing program. We also have funds dedicated to two pieces of fire apparatus. We do have police vehicles, which are part of the two thousand nineteen budget, additional improvements for drainage and asphalt at the sanitation facility on Century Court. That, along with estimated cost of issuance for the, the new money bonds, these are funds that would be used within the next three years for spending on those, those projects. At the same time, we are asking for permission to refinance a two thousand nine Build America bond. There is savings in doing this refinancing, we have ten more years on that term, and we would keep the same ten years. There's about two hundred thousand dollars of interest savings every year. There is also some reduction in risk because we will no longer have to be processing a federal subsidy on those two thousand nine bonds, and these will be traditional fixed-rate tax-exempt bonds. And the total par amount is sixty-one point five million dollars, there is an efficiency to do both of these issuances together. We will be having one bond issue, that will be one series dedicated to the new projects, and one series that is for the refinancing. We did, in accordance with state law, submit the refinancing to the state for their review and approval, and that's a part of this package, is on February the twelfth, the state has approved our plan of refunding for the two thousand nine bonds.
And the maturity of these bonds tied to the different projects and different elements of them, consistent with the lifespan expected for those assets, so. You know, the, the police vehicles are a much shorter term compared to Franklin Road, and so we've aligned those with what makes sense with the lifespan we expect from each of those assets, so.
Any questions, Alderman Peterson? I'm sorry, any questions, Alderman Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In, in looking at all of this, I was, it came to mind whenever I was asked this morning at our meeting, our joint meeting, what our bonded indebtedness was. And I said, you know, I'm not really sure, I said maybe a hundred and forty million, and it turns out that based on our audit, that was what we were, what, what we're at. But if you're talking about then an extra thirty-four or five, that's going to put our bonded indebtedness up. Now, it's saying that we're not paying any off or anything, but it's going to, it's going to increase that by twenty-four percent.
Well, on, on June thirtieth of two thousand eighteen, our outstanding principal for city debt, general obligation debt, that which this is, was one hundred, one hundred and thirty-six million dollars. And we, we are paying off debt this year, and we would be adding to thirty-four and a half, and I, and I would, you know, yes, that, that was a question from this morning, talking about, about the indebtedness, but, but we certainly, the average, well, we'll mention that the average life, because many of these, some of these assets would be amortized shorter, is just over ten years. So we would be, we would be amortizing principal every year, and it's fairly early, within that, within the twenty years of the final maturity of the bond issue.
I'm just saying, though, that that was, I, I just happened to be lucky in, in guessing what it was, but still, it's going to be a pretty big increase in the per capita price, you know, per, per capita number for.
Debt per capita.
Yes, it is.
This is consistent with what we built financial plans around, related to the capital investment plan and the other policies you have in place, so. What you're saying is true, but it is also what we've planned for in terms of delivering on projects and, and staying within our means and our, our debt policy and other elements that help guide us.
And it is no accident, Alderman Peterson, we know you, know your numbers. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Comment, and this is just an observation more than anything. There was a number thrown out this morning at the meeting of, the county already has about seven hundred and fifty million dollars of debt. If we add the cities to that, the city taxpayer, you, me, whoever, we have approximately one billion dollars of debt that we're responsible for directly or indirectly. That's an astronomical number, to me it is, to have that kind of debt. Now, I don't know how you get out of, out of that, that's just a throw-out comment with no answer whatsoever, but that is a tremendous amount of debt. And that didn't include the other municipalities, that's the county and the city at about one billion dollars of debt. Well, it may be less than the federal government, but the federal government is a whole lot bigger.
We, we do, I will say, we do plan very carefully how we use debt, I just wanna, you know, just for folks listening and that are here, it is a significant amount of money, but we do try to be very mindful how we use it. And, and the last capital investment group of projects was approximately sixty percent in the debt category, forty percent pay-as-you-go. I think we expect this next year to actually be a little more balanced, even less funded through debt compared to what maybe we've done in the past, so we try to balance that. It's also looking at the future beneficiaries of these investments and having them help pay for it too. So there's a number of things, but we do try to plan carefully our use and make sure we're staying within our means when we do issue debt. So I, I, comments are, are well-made and, and taken, but we do try to make sure we're planning carefully how we use that tool, along with our others, to fund the investments the community needs.
Okay, we're gonna continue moving on, we're gonna go to item nine, which is additional discussion on the Sanitation Environmental Services Cost of Service Study and Operation Refinements. If you remember, it was about next steps and actually going to a container recycle program, and also how we're gonna alter some of the business we're doing.
So, yeah, as the mayor said, we talked about this a couple weeks ago, or a couple meetings ago, this really is a summary of the implementation components of moving forward. We talked about really moving out of the commercial dumpster business, that that was not really a core business for us, and focusing more of our attention on the residential services. And then also transitioning residential recycling from the blue bag to a, a permanent container, a rollout container, that, that recycling, that that would be better for processing and for managing the system going for, the, the service going forward. So I guess we're still getting the presentation up, our pucks aren't working tonight.
Everybody remember the presentation, we need to, to run back through highlights?
We're not going back through, yeah. There's a lot of math on cost of service.
So what kind of questions the board have?
Sure, so if, if I can, we're gonna do the abridged version. As you recall, we went through three different scenarios, there was the baseline scenario, the sustained fleet scenario, and then a modified operations with sustained fleet. And these are the summary of the different cost of service scenarios that we had talked about last time. When you look at the modified scenario, or the modified operations scenario, two of the key elements, we're going to an automated collection for curbside recycling, as well as refocus our efforts on our, our commercial collection. And, and look at, at doing only commercial rollouts versus commercial dumpsters due to the, due to the cost of that. There's a, a number of things we wanted to discuss with respect to automated, automated curbside recycling. We've been preparing for budget, and we went through Budget and Finance Committee a few weeks ago, and we, of course, had to make some, some general assumptions, but wanted to talk with you about those tonight, and we'll come back to you at a future meeting, and kinda, and I guess sort of memorialize your guidance with that respect. But in terms of the curbside recycling, there are a number of issues that we are currently facing with the Blue Bag Program. Locally, our processor in Marshall County has a very difficult time in managing the plastic bags, that it gums up their, their equipment and, and causes a lot of downtime. Globally, we, we have mentioned this before, but the, the markets are really challenging now. United States used to ship a lot of their recyclables to China, they have, in March of last year, has, have reduced or, or become more stringent on the amount of contamination that they allow. They're now down to point five percent contamination, I think Franklin were probably less than ten percent, so we do relatively well compared to the rest of the country, but we're, we're not there. Employee safety is a big reason why we, we wanna go to automated curbside recycling as well. Over a, a five-year period, we incurred claims of, of over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's largely related to slinging bags into the back of a truck, climbing up and down off the backs of trucks and things of that nature. So we end up having a lot of our staff getting injured. Automated recycling will, has a likelihood of reducing that tremendously. Also going to automated recycling, we, we're looking at consolidating the type of equipment that we use. Currently, we use side loaders for municipal solid waste. If we go to automated recycling, we would also use side loaders, so we can reduce the type of equipment in our fleet. And we would also have rollout containers for recycling as well. And of course, we, we would anticipate efficiencies when you have an automated, automated recycling, you, definitely more efficient at the, at the collection point. You can also route the, the pickups as well. So anyway, so there's a, a lot of benefits in going towards it, that's why we, we wanted to propose it to you. So some of the program elements, this is some of the items we're gonna bring back to you. We have assumed that we're going down the path of voluntary recycling. The city, as a, as a board, you may wanna choose to go in a different route, you may wanna go mandatory, but that, we'll, we'll ask that question in a, formally later on. But as of now, we made the assumption that we're going voluntary, the service would be included in our, in the residential fee, as we do with Blue Bag service, and we would continue doing weekly service using a sixty-four gallon cart. The cart we currently use is ninety-six gallons, sixty-four gallon cart is, you know, two-thirds that size, so.
And there would be a one-time setup.
Correct, yeah, so one of the things that, to, to offset the cost of the carts, and we expect to be able to buy them for about forty to forty-five dollars. So we, we have not only that, the, the purchase cost, but there's an administrative cost as well associated with getting the cart information into the account, et cetera. So we would anticipate charging a cost of forty to forty-five dollars to offset our expenditures. We are looking at the beginning of calendar year two thousand twenty to actually start setting carts out, and once carts are set out, we would charge that administrative setup fee based on the current assumptions. If we had, if we end up going in that direction, we're gonna start a, a campaign for public education. Jack's already started working with the communications group to, to head down that path. And of course, we, we all know, despite how much communication and outreach we do, we're gonna expect that there's gonna be some folks who, who, who need to, it'll take some time for them to get used to the new, new system. So we'll, we'll have to manage that as we implement. So that is the, the, oh, that was very quick, quick on curbside recycling, jumped into commercial collection. As we had talked about last time, the cost of service for commercial customers is about a hundred dollars, little over a hundred dollars per month, and that's based on a weekly service. Now, that's an average across the rollout container plus the, the dumpster service. So if you wanna parse those out, then you're looking at a dumpster service cost of over a hundred and fifty dollars a month. So we're, we're actually gonna be looking at fees that would probably put us out of the market anyway, we only have several hundred customers, we can't compete with that level of volume. So we're advocating and going down the road of eliminating dumpster service with commercial. We would still be able to do a rollout service with commercial, because again, we'd be using the side loaders, in some circumstances, we'd be using different types of equipment, but largely using side loaders. We would anticipate eliminating dumpster service budget by July one. We think we're, we're going down the path of, of doing a ninety-day notification based on, on your approval, making sure that we're still stepping through what they do with our dumpsters. There are some customers that have our dumpsters, there are some that they own their own dumpsters, so we're kinda working through the mechanics of that still. And so that's, that's the, the quick and really fast version of what I wanted to say this evening, and happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Berger.
Oh, Mark, yeah, so, and Jack, and all of you, just, if any of you can answer this question, appreciate it. So if you're going to the sixty-four, what was it, sixty-four gallon?
Sixty-four gallons, yes ma'am.
Sixty-four gallon. So give me the equivalent of how much content that would hold versus a Blue Bag. So can I stick two Blue Bags in there, full, or three?
Equation of that, part of that equation is how the person utilizes it.
Right, pushes it down.
Because you'll have it separated out in a, a bag or whatever you're gonna take to put it into the cart, you'll be able to see what's going in. And in my experience, in Nashville, we did pilot Blue Bag program before we went to carts. We actually get, got more volume in carts than bags. You got a lot of airspace in the bags that you won't have, and it'll surprise you, and, and don't forget, we are picking up weekly, very few.
Yeah. For recycling.
Municipalities in the country do a weekly service, so some of them are, are monthly. Nashville just now proved monies to go to twice a month, they've been once a month for years.
So in other words, you're telling me if you compact it via plastic and, and you step on it and compress it, and you put probably quite a bit in that? I'm just worried.
It's really based on the user.
Large enough to, what, what would someone then, would you have a protocol for someone who had an overflow of what you do with that?
We had hoped, well, number one, we'll obviously have information on the county facilities that are always available, that take recyclables. We plan to at least make cardboard outlet available on our location at Century Court for people that have excess cardboard. Our goal is to not pick up waste off the ground. Basically, our code calls for that now, we just haven't done a good job of policing it over the years.
So, so the cardboard then would either have to be crushed down and put into the cart as well, no more on the ground?
Correct.
All right, and the last thing is, I just wanna tell you that I do support eliminating the dumpster service for commercial. I think that definitely needs to be eliminated. In fact, I would be not opposed, I would not be opposed to eliminating commercial collection period. Not sure we need to be in that business.
For the rollout carts, they're, they're set up on a, on basically residential routes anyway, that are all, already going through that area, other than the down core, downtown core businesses that we want to continue to, to maintain. But, and we have, don't have that many. Number one, they've gotta be able to use a cart, number two, they've gotta be able to get it to curb, and it's usually on a route that we're already going, trucks going down, so there's no. And it's usually on a route that we're already going, trucks going down, so there's no problem.
I don't really want to do anything to encourage more commercial collection, because I think it'd be nice to get out of that business altogether, but as you said, if they're in a residential area or like downtown, and you have the ability to have that, okay. Thank you.
Alderman Blatton.
I just have two quick questions. On the moving blue bag away, what I'm trying to say, switching that, there won't be any rise in price for the consumer?
No ma'am.
Stay static, okay.
We've gone through this cost of service analysis.
Except for the purchase of the receptive.
We're approaching that rate, and we're going to continue going back and evaluating what our costs are relative to what we're charging our customers. We expect rates are going to go up over time. I mean, it's expected.
I just feel like we've just gotten through a cycle of raising rates?
No, I understand.
And I think we need to just be still for a minute.
This transition to blue bag will not, in and of itself, drive the rates to go up. So it should improve.
Okay, and then secondly, and this is kind of one of those, like, where do the dumpsters go if we own them? Are we able to recoup any type of, I mean, like you sell a used car, can you sell a used dumpster?
I've actually had a few calls from the private haulers that are very interested.
I've just seen some of our extras sitting up on the hill, and I'm like, what are we going to do with all those? We already have some sitting there.
We have, we have rules that we need to follow when it comes to surplus equipment, so we need to step through that.
Good to know, thank you.
Alderman Peterson, then Alderman McLendon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again. You've answered one of my questions already, that yard waste. Now, ground waste would be like, you know, we sometimes put the cardboard down under the blue bags, but what about the yard waste that's like, you know, sticks and everything you put in the brown bags? Are they still going to be picked up?
Yes, the brown bags and yard wastes are totally separate, just the way we're doing it now.
All right, a second question is, what about multifamily? Are they considered commercial?
There's actually different customers. So apartments in, I think generally are considered commercial customers.
Okay, so in other words, you would not be picking up from them based on these ideas that we're talking about?
There's a whole slew of different scenarios that we have.
There's one qualifier that you use our 95-gallon trash cart rollout.
Got you, okay, okay.
So that's not a clean one to answer.
And then whenever we're talking about, we're saying that this is optional, what about somebody that can't afford to pay the $45 for the new cart? You know, because there are some people who, yeah, who really are fixed into, thank you.
Allowance could be made with some kind of qualifying factor of who gets it.
Just wondered about that, because for some people, as we say, that could be a problem.
We currently don't have a program to provide for that, but that's certainly something we can look at. I think there's opportunities for the community to support it as well. I know we have the roll-up program and for the utility bills, you know, so there's some options we can look at, so.
Thank you.
The other thing on that, one of the things we may want to look at is how we space out that payment, but let's choose one path. You know, you could do it one shot, $40, or you could spread it over multiple months. We just want to do it the same way for everybody, just from a ease of administration. That could help. If you're a regular blue bag person, you're going to pay for this in a little more than a year, I think, depending on the volume you use, because the blue bags are not free. So you're spending money on that anyway, so it's a pretty quick payback for most people, but we can certainly work with those that might need some help.
Alderman, if you want to wrap this topic up?
Sure. What is our participation rate among blue bag people? And what if any impact on participation do we anticipate as a result of transferring over? That's question one. And question two, for all practical purposes, it's March. I'm very concerned about attempting to eliminate commercial dumpster service starting July 1, 2019, because people, as we just heard, you can tell people months in advance, and some people will still experience disruption. And in the case of commercial dumpster service, that could be really ugly.
Jack, you want to answer the first part in terms of participation?
The first part, depending on how you measure participation, set-out rate, I would argue that 80% of the residents participate. They may not do it weekly. 60% on the average participate weekly, if you average it out. Unless you've got an identifier for who's actually using it every week.
Well, I don't care whether, I mean, I assume if they're not using it weekly, it's because they don't need it. You're saying something on the order of 80% overall?
Use it, the program.
Okay.
The frequency.
When we got into this, the idea was to hit some number that made it no worse than break even by getting more recycling diverted out of our tipping fee tonnage. Are we there?
No.
What would it take to get there? And will this transfer of method impact that, and if so, how?
It does reduce, any volume we recycle does reduce what we're paying tip fee by equivalent number of tons. Will it ever pay for itself? No.
There's a cost to doing it, and the market change has affected us, but we are getting participation rates that are higher than we originally expected or hoped for.
So there's no way to divert your way out of expense?
Yeah, you're always going to have some expense. It's not going to be some net.
Are we at the point where the marginal return on the investment has been maxed out? In other words?
No, no.
Do we get, if we got more participation, would we get lower costs overall?
We would, yes.
So will this program of transferring people to a bucket process, what if any participation impact will we have?
I fully expect an increase in volume of recyclables. The easier and more convenient you make it for people, the more they're likely to use it. And I think Franklin, being Franklin, will catch on to it and like it, so.
Okay, everybody active with that, and we'll move on to item number 10, which is Order 2019, you know, one of the municipal solid waste disposal first of the, so, providing that for the transfer station customers to get billed for due date.
All righty, so as you know, we stepped through a change to Title 17 a number of months ago. Part of that change had to do with billing at the transfer station. One of the things that we had put in the ordinance amendment last time was that the due date for bills for transfer station customers was on the 15th of the month following the month of service. Feedback from customers, particularly customers who have a corporate office out of state where they have to send bills, it's become a challenge for them to make the 15th due date in which they get a 10% penalty. So we're proposing to strike the line in the municipal code that establishes the 15th as that date, and we can set a due date on the bills. We're looking at a 30-day, which is a typical due date time.
Consistent with how we do some other bills.
Correct.
Everybody good with that? We're going to move on to item 11, which is Road Impact Fee Offset Agreement for Avalon Square PUD subdivision with Parks Development Group LLC.
We wanted to bring this back for just some clarification on how this might work, and also how the existing impact fee ordinance itself and some of the other structures work with what has been potentially proposed. So Paul, take us through that.
Okay, so we're excited about this development moving forward. We are recommending approval of the impact fee offset agreement for three of the improvements that involves the two partial median closures and then one full median closures. The reason why we're recommending approval of that is because they benefit the arterial roadway and they are non-site-related improvements. Mr. Parks was also requesting for another five additional offsets with that. We consider those to be all non-arterial or collector, they don't benefit the arterial collector roadway, so we're recommending against those. They also cannot be used, in our opinion, to use road impact fees to pay for a lot of those improvements for many reasons. One being that it doesn't benefit the roadway, and two, it's not really part of the collector or the arterial impact fees to do these site-related improvements, is what I would say. And what he's requesting is two traffic signals that are not part of your signal master plan, which is a requirement, that they be on the signal master plan. And then there's a few de-acceleration lanes and some median modifications that are being done to provide access to the site. So he's requesting those, but we don't feel that that's appropriate at all, and happy to answer any questions that you have.
Vice Mayor.
The question is, if that was not being developed, would we need any of those left-turn lanes, right-turn lanes, traffic signals?
No.
So then it's all related to the development?
Correct.
Okay, I'm satisfied.
Alderman Peterson? Alderman Berger?
Certification on the traffic signals? So without that, Avalon wouldn't get the traffic signal?
Correct.
And there wouldn't be another traffic signal on McEwen either?
Correct, there would not be a traffic signal there.
And what was the other thing? The deceleration lanes would be for the entrance. And the median modification would not be required either, correct?
Correct.
Because it's the entrance into that, and, okay, that's it.
Anybody else? Everybody clear? Ready to move on? Item number 12 was Road Impact Fee Agreement with Clayton Properties Group, a Tennessee corporation, City of Franklin, 2019-0031 for the Reese Farms PUD subdivision.
This is dedication of right-of-way for a collector roadway. This absolutely qualifies, we're recommending approval.
Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 13 is City of Franklin.
Push this. Right.
Mr. Alderman Peterson?
I'll have to push the green, I'll have to push the green faster. The question I had was, how much road impact fees do we have for that quadrant, or whatever you call it?
I don't have that answer today with you.
Almost nothing, right.
But we don't, we don't offset, basically, they pay into the fund, and when the funding's there, it gets reimbursed to them. So the funding will be there guaranteed, and you cannot exceed the impact fee that you pay in.
Thank you.
Item 13, City of Franklin Contract 2019-007, Parkland Impact Fee and Greenway Trail System Construction Agreement between City of Franklin and Clayton Properties, Inc., for the property known as the fields at Reese Farms.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the first Parkland impact of fee agreement that you'll see through this new program. And so just as Paul was stating on the dedication of the right-of-way, we are requesting the same as dedication of a right-of-way for a trail system. The total impact for this particular development, there was 132 units at $4,304 a unit, which ends up being a total of $568,128. The eligible offset, because it's a greenway and in the floodplain area, the eligible offset is $426,000, so 25%, which ends up being around $142,000, would be designated to a community park within Quadrant 4. So that's your bicentennial Jim Warren Park, those type areas. What's on the screen tonight is an overall view. You see the fields at Reese Farms in the yellow. Kevin has worked closely with the development and planning to make sure, basically, that's where this development is, and Riser Point is an area where we already received an easement several years ago. So this will be a full connection to the future Mack catcher that you have within the screen area. There is one amendment, as you're working through your first contract, you try to get everything correct, but instead of an easement, we are requesting that we do a right-of-way and that Good Old Homes would designate a plat, requires a plat from Good Old Homes for the right-of-way. So we would actually own the land as well as the construction, and we would maintain it.
So they're dedicating the trail?
They would dedicate the trail system. And so we'll ask for that amendment to be considered this evening.
Alderman Barnhill.
Alderman McLendon mentioned a while ago, I forget how he put it, he forgot what he, so he did remember some of the things that he forgot, and I forget some of the things that happened that I don't remember.
Yes, sir.
You said $500,000, thank you, you're welcome. Now, so out of that, they're eligible then for $125,000 or so?
They're eligible for 75% of the $568.
So that's $426.
Correct.
So the total bill is the five?
The total bill is the $568.
So they're paying in five?
They are an offset of 75%.
They'll get back four.
They'll get back four, and you'll have close to $143,000 in that quadrant to put toward a community park. Yes, sir. And that is laid out within the contract itself.
Ready to move on?
Thank you.
Next is Consideration Professional Services Agreement with CNT Engineering and Inspection LLC for Construction Administration Services for the East McEwen Drive Roundabout Improvements, not to exceed $94,880. Anybody got a question about that? We're going to move on to 15.
We're out the bid.
Next is a request to waive Title 18 for 107 Chester Stevens Court, 111 Chester Stevens Court, 115 Chester Stevens Court for the associated impact fees related to sewer connections.
So these private property owners went ahead and extended service, funded themselves to extend service and tie into the public system, and that has been allowed. They have made a further request to waive specific system impact fees related to that tie-on. We are not recommending the waiver of those fees. We were able to, I think, avoid one specific component of the fee because of what they installed and doing their work, but we would recommend not granting that based on how we normally apply and the purpose of impact fees, which is the capacity, the treatment capacity and the collection, broader collection system capacity that is calculated for future users that come on the system, and that's what these folks are. We, I would say, kind of outside of this topic, we may be able to work with them to establish an arrangement for them to get recapture of some of the costs they've put in, because there are some other property owners downstream, if you will, that could tie in and benefit from their investment, and we would be glad to work with a mechanism that would allow them to recapture some of the costs they've put up front in the system. But the impact fee, from a staff perspective and the purpose of the ordinances, we don't believe that's appropriate to waive their fair share of the capacity in the system that has been set aside for future users, which these are an example of.
Alderman Blatton, then Alderman Martin.
Mine's really quick. You think you know your city and what streets are where? Please put a map, because I'm like, I know where Chester Stevens is, but I have no idea where it is. Where is it?
Right next to Fountains of Franklin. It's a, it's a street that goes up.
Right, we try to normally do that.
I look through every attachment all day, and I'm like, oh, there's no map.
If you're standing on 96, and you're looking at the Fountains of Franklin, it's the street right there on the left.
Okay, yeah, and most of the times I figure it out.
And there's three houses up there.
So helpful.
Sorry about that.
Alderman Martin, you're recognized.
On page two of the letter that they wrote, it says, "We know BOMA has waived tap fees in the past, and they want, that's the reason they say they want it." When did that happen, and why?
You've done that sporadically with some of the special assessment projects. You've chosen to waive certain elements of fees at different times, but you have not done it consistently. I will just say that in some of the special assessments, that's the only examples I can think of.
Correct, those are the only examples I'm aware of as well.
Okay, thank you.
Add Alderman Barnhill, and then you, Alderman Peterson.
Very brief. The ability to recover on somebody connecting on downstream in between you and wherever they are, we've done that in the past. It's not something that's out of the ordinary. You could offer that to them, but I would agree with staff that we probably should not waive the tap fees.
I do think that the recoupment would certainly be something that we ought to propose to them, because they have put a lot of money into this, a lot more than propose to them, because they have put a lot of money into this, a lot more than other people that just are tapping on have to pay.
Alderman Berger.
I would say that these three owners, homeowners, came to me, and one of the homeowners passed away suddenly, so his wife is under some hardships right now, and so it's another reason they asked about this, because they already put in $100,000 for sewer, for the three homes. And I told them to write the letter, and come to us to ask, what part of the fee did we waive already that we didn't waive, we gave them credit for?
Right, so there's different elements to the impact fee, the installation component was, we didn't charge that, simply because they did the installation work themselves. It just didn't make sense to, seemed like we were kind of double-dipping in that respect.
So there's no other, anything else we can do, except possibly down the road, if somebody else wants to hook on, that we can?
The remaining elements are related to collection system investments the city has made, as well as treatment investments the city's made.
Because I would tell you, the way you had the one, the line that goes behind the homes, they've done all the work, they've paid a ton of money for this, and the people living right behind them can just tap on. It's not going to be expensive for them to do so.
No, I understand, that's why Eric had mentioned, we've been discussing and working with Law Department to see if there's a way we can develop a proposal to bring forward, and see if there's a way we can have them recapture for those who tie in in the future.
I'm just a little concerned with them, especially for Mrs. Kavanaugh.
I understand.
As well.
Okay, we're going to defer items 17 and 18 to the March 12 work session, and seeing no other business, we're going to adjourn for 15 minutes, then we'll start Board of Mayor and Alderman meeting.